I'd like to call this meeting to order. And before we start, we are going to change. We're going to flip Agenda Item E with Agenda Item F. And so at this point, we are going to start, though, with a proclamation from Commissioner Moore involving Public Works.
Okay, I'm very honored to read this. So, this is the City of Shelton proclamation. Whereas the City of Shelton's solid waste department is one that has operated with immense dedication and loyalty. The positive attitudes and integrity of the individuals within this department, as well as their commitment to their fellow employees and responsibilities, has made them invaluable. They have been outstanding employees who, on a daily basis, have gone above and beyond in their duties and have always exceeded the performance standards in their roles within the solid waste department. The department's employees have consistently and loyally delivered extraordinary service to the citizens of Shelton, which has again and again earned them praise from their customers. The forward-thinking and the creative innovation displayed by the department's individuals has made them admired, well-respected assets to the Public Works Department and the City of Shelton. Furthermore, let it be known that the City of Shelton declares June 30, 2017, as the commemoration of the solid waste department and its employees, and it wishes to thank them for their dedicated and loyal service to the City of Shelton. So, I will present this to our solid waste department, and then Craig Gregory has a further announcement.
Come up, you three.[134.69][134.69](Laughter)[135.69][135.69](Applause)
You earned it.[151.13][151.13](Laughter)
It was that hold you.[153.13][153.13](Laughter)
You are going to have to pass that off because you've got something else coming.
Okay, I'll hold it. Can we be seated now?
No, if you would stay with Mike, that would be great. I would, the City of Shelton would just like to thank Mike McLean for his 40 years of service. He has been a most dedicated and loyal employee of the City of Shelton, and he will be retiring on June 30th, coming up on this Friday. So, we would just like to thank Mike for his 40 years that he has been here and served the City of Shelton to his best ability. And we thank him for everything that he has done over those 40 years to make the city a better place. And every day, I feel that he has tried to do that on a day-to-day basis. Thanks, Mike.[207.51][207.51](Applause) We're going to bring her up here and get a picture with you.[216.06][216.06](Laughter) I know how much I excite you.
Do they have commissioners?
All right, one, two, three. All right, guys, one more. Commissioners, can we get one more with you? One more with you guys.
You too.
Can I say something before they leave?
Absolutely.
Hey, guys, the three solid waste guys. I want to thank you for being my garbage solid waste collectors for 30-plus years, and the service you've given me has been wonderful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, next is our weekly commission reports, and so we'll start with Commissioner Moore.
Well, I've had a few questions about last week when we were out of town at the Association of Washington Cities Conference, and I will just speak briefly about that. I was asked what was my favorite session that I went to, and I would have to say it was the walking tours around downtown Vancouver. I, where's Craig? Oh, there you are. He'll be really happy to know that I took several sessions on parks and landscaping and trees, and so I've got some great pointers and ideas. And then also, it was extremely interesting seeing the renovations that had been done in downtown Vancouver in a former Brownfield site. And they've done an immense amount of rebuilding and economic development that started with a grant and moved on to another grant. And it's awesome for their city. So, that was very interesting, too, seeing how they had done that. So, that was last week. Oh, gosh, that's my phone. I have a meeting with constituents on Tuesday, on Thursday, a briefing, and then I will be attending a Save the Eggs fundraiser at the Colonial House for ovarian cancer. And then on Friday, I will be going to see the garbage trucks as they make their last trip back to the shop. And on Sunday, I'm going to be attending a volunteer day up at the Shelton Memorial Park. A group of citizens are putting together an event to show the love to our cemetery and weeded and weed around there and just show the respect that we have for our citizens who have gone before. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Commissioner McDowell?
I also was at the AWC conference, and there were several things that I, you always, you go to lots of things and you pick out a couple of things that you're really, really interested in. There was one class on how to develop our Main Street in our towns with, other than government dollars or citizens' dollars, but people getting together and investing in a building or investing in a business. And one that really was funny was in Port Townsend, there's a business called The Creamery. And a group of people came together, invested in this business, and their dividends out of this business for the first year, they all got free cheese. So, I just thought that was such a cool, cool idea that people came together and were creative in their thinking on, other than using government dollars or citizens' dollars, we get together and we think up these things to bring a business into town. So, that was very interesting. I have a briefing on Thursday, and I will also be attending the event, what's the name of it again, at the Colonial House?
Save the Eggs.
Save the Eggs. So, I will be attending that also. And Friday, I will also be watching the solid waste trucks. So, that's my week.
All right. I also attended the Association of Washington Cities Annual Convention in Vancouver, and it was a great opportunity to network and also go to several different educational courses on issues that all cities are facing. Probably one that I went to that was probably the most eye-opening was the reality of homelessness, mental illness, and opiate addictions, and what different cities are doing to combat that. I walked away being thankful that we live in a small city and that we have people like Chief Darren Moody, who is working on our behalf to help deal with this issue. And it's one of those things that's going to take everybody to put our heads together to make sure that there's beds and housing and different medical solutions to this problem. But it is, trust me, it is universal, and it's just every, some very great minds are putting together a lot of different options and different solutions. And we're always there to try and, I have no problem picking up a point or a tip from another city when I'm in these situations, and I will be talking to Chief Moody about some of the things I learned. Now, this week, I have no scheduled meetings other than a staff reading. And that concludes our commission report. Next is general public comment period. Do we have anybody signed in?
Randy Lewis?
Hi, everybody, Randy Lewis. I would like to echo the praise just bestowed on the Public Works Department, especially the folks that were specifically talked about. In general, I've told my friend Craig Gregory how beautiful railroad is. I sometimes head down to railroad at night when I think it is at its most spectacular. But speaking of garbage, oh, excuse me, solid waste, when City of Shelton residents look at their monthly PUD III bill, the citizens will find state and city utility taxes of roughly 6% explicitly listed on the invoice as separate line items. When the City of Shelton garbage ratepayers look at bills from Mason County garbage, the citizen will be charged a city utility tax of 31%. Yes, 31%. But it may be hard to find. The contract states that 5% of the 31% be explicitly listed as a separate line item on the bill, with the city requiring that the other 26% be hidden, oh, excuse me, embedded as part of the total added to the base rate, perhaps with footnotes. The resulting upfront loan in the form of a $1 million kickback to the city government is to be followed by annual kickbacks of an estimated $500,000. This is a cash grab by the city extracted directly out of the hide of garbage ratepayers. This is cash laundered through Mason County garbage in a process that a Mexican drug cartel would be proud of. Should garbage ratepayers be required to pay these egregious taxes to give kickbacks to a city government that will have little or no role in providing garbage service? Even if I thought the flawed financial logic that was presented, even if I bought it, which I don't, it is not true with metaphysical certitude that the rates that Mason County garbage will charge will always be lower than what the city would have charged. We will talk about actual projected numbers at a later time, but for now, let me throw out this concept. The city implies that it would have increased garbage rates only to fund the increase in the actual cost for them to provide the service. Suppose the CPI goes up by 10%. Would the city have increased garbage rates 10%? Would the city have raised salaries 10%? Would their overall costs have risen 10%? To the extent that the city's costs would not have increased 10%, this is even more true of Mason County's garbage with their huge existing infrastructure. Yet Mason County garbage is not constrained by what their actual cost increases will be. Mason County garbage will be allowed to increase their rates by the full CPI increase, which will be unlimited after the first 10 years of the contract. Speaking of senior citizens, this methodology not only damages current senior citizens, but is breathtakingly efficient against senior citizens in 10 years, many who are not senior citizens today. These are not the lowest possible rates the city could have obtained. In fact, the city could have reduced Mason County garbage rates 26% and likely still come out with a net positive position. Thank you. How's that for time?
All right, anybody else? Do we have anybody else? Anybody else? All right. Next, are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Could we please have a reading of the consent agenda?
Okay, the consent agenda, voucher numbered 14780 in the amount of $644.99, and voucher numbered 14781 in the amount of $26,275.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
I second it.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The agenda passes. Next is, we're moving into administration reports, as was noted earlier. And so, the first person that we're going to hear from is our fire chief, Tim McKernan.
... You use the briefings that are inside your packets that you receive, or picture members when you get this, and find significant from there. As you can see, they were 2531 in our district and 1194 in the city. From Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we did 56 calls in that period of time. Unbelievable. I have to commend Mace Common yesterday. And we had a trailer fire in the district and a few other calls, but also to that, and a busy day all the way around. We went in from search up in Mallard. We had a couple hundred hikers to shooting at the north end of town. And so, I can tell you that I commend all the fire districts and EMS and police for what they did and how we kind of managed to maintain it. And I call, we dodged, no point in trying to dodge the bullet, but we certainly covered every single call we missed and that was good for the work we do. Pancake Freckles at the fireworks station is on Saturday from 7:00 to 11:00. Please come out and join us. It's like Limerick days as well. And then there's a summer fire safety handout from NFA that's also in your packets as well. We try to get those out throughout the summer as we go through there as well. And of course, our education's ongoing regarding the city fireworks and making sure that that gets out and the message is out there. I think the good benefit to it is, of course, Fourth of July is on a Tuesday, and so that kind of helps us. Usually when it's during the week, things settle down a little bit. It may not settle down at the end of the arena, but we can certainly hope for that. So, that's our, that's the review from the fire side of things, and we'll carry on from there.
And to clarify for the public and those that are sitting here and on media is, what you're talking about is that we in the City of Shelton have a ban on fireworks.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's what you were kind of talking about and that, and this is a couple of years down the road, and I'm sure, hopefully, it gets better every single year. So, to all those out there listening, please, listen to the request of your commissioners and your fire chief to obey the law and do not let your fireworks go off inside the city limits. And it's a high, imagine with 100-degree weather, this is a high, high fire dam, a fire dangerous type of situation.
We've already had three state moles, which is earliest we've ever had any state moles just east of the mountains. We'll be meeting tomorrow morning to discuss the ongoing, how we're going to deal with the rest of them. So, it's trial there. Don't worry, it's a drive pre-quick.
All right, any other questions for our?
So, are we noticing the numbers go down as the years go by when fireworks are illegal? It's not diminishing?
I can tell you from our standpoint, it has not in the time I've been here.
Okay, that's too bad.
Unfortunately, when you have a city that outlaws fireworks within the city, that you have two reservations within five miles that sell explosives, that's a recipe for the big epidemic.
Oh, yeah, it's terrifying when it's dry like this.
With the hope for education, education, education.
Yes, I guess we need to make it a year-round thing, maybe. So, I know my dog really hates it. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Chief Darren Moody?
Well, the good news, commissioners, is that after meeting with our finance director and city manager and realizing there's some salary savings within the police department, we were able to hire a new officer. So, in 2014, we had 18 officers, including from the chief on down. We have been down to as low as 16 since I've been here. And with this hire, we should be back at 18 officers. And we hired Officer Trent Latch, who is a lateral officer from a nearby agency, and he'll be starting at the first week of July. We have another opening up in front at the police department in records and evidence, and that's been posted and up for another week, I believe, waiting for the interview for those. The timing is good for having a new officer because currently, one of our officers fell, last week, two weeks ago, fell and broke his wrist, so he'll be out for the next six weeks.
Oh, no.
And so, unfortunately, we don't realize the 18 right away, but we will by the end of summer. We'll be announcing the new corporals next week. And they did a corporal testing and another line of supervision for the department. You guys did very well in the interviews, and we'll be announcing those positions. We've had an uptick in a few things. School got out, and when school got out, the vehicle prowls went up within that week. And so, we had a grant regarding vehicle theft and theft around the vehicles. That's what you see here in front of you is water bottles. I know Mike Fio, our lieutenant, was out this weekend at several events handing out the water bottles and reminding people to not leave valuables out in cars, to lock them up, not leave things visible. All too often, we go to the theft report and they say, "I left my laptop sitting on the front seat," or "I left my purse on the front seat." No, I forgot to lock the car, and that's what occurs. We also are giving away and have been giving away clubs. If you're a resident of the City of Shelton, this old-fashioned, I say old-fashioned because it's not the alarm systems and all the fancy electrical, but it's one of the best ways to deter auto theft. We've given away probably 100 of these stuff. Auto theft actually dropped in the last three months since we've been giving them away. We have more at the police department free through a grant. If you live within the City of Shelton and you're interested, stop by. All you have to do is provide your address so you live within the city. With the vehicle prowls, we also had an increase in some graffiti. You may have seen up along the trail up there, some folks decided to spray paint some trees, which is tough to deal with because, as I was talking to Craig, there really is no way to remove that without damaging the tree. That's what I've got so far. Any questions?
I have a comment I would like to pass on. Kudos from my across-the-street neighbor who had an officer notice that her dome light was on, and so he stopped to tell her that her car was unlocked and some things had been taken from it. But also, the officer then went down the street and checked the other car doors to make sure everybody was locked up. So, really appreciate that, and that makes the community feel safer, definitely.
Like I said, most of our property crimes, vehicle prowls, thefts are crimes of opportunity. It's not targeting certain cars. It's walking down the street, literally checking car doors to see if it's open.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Shelby Conklin. You're up.
I'm just going to give you a report on an update on the community service activities from May 1st through June 23rd. In partnering with other city departments, the community service hauled remodeling to agree to the dump, weeded and turned around the civic center, library, water treatment plant on Front and Park Streets, fire station, city parking lots, Dogtown and Yard, and weeded the post office park beds. They scraped weeds at Evergreen Square. For the Parks Department, they did various, they worked in various parks. At Calanan, they weeded and pulled weed, and pulled weeds, scraped the asphalt, turned the bar. Nealon Park, they trimmed, weeded, and pulled the weeds and picked up for the Relay for Life. At the Log Monument in Saw Wheel Park, they weeded and planted flowers. They weeded around, or weeded around Tolling. They planted flowers in the big boxes on railroad, and that's our tree for Public Works. And for the community, they, for the master gardeners, community garden, they moved mulch to the upper garden and weeded for habitat, for humanity. They cleaned the flower beds, trimmed the trees, and weeded it for an upcoming event. They scraped the downtown sidewalks. They weeded, trimmed bushes, brush, excuse me, and trees, scraped sidewalks and pulled weeds on Fairmont, Cascade Bridge, and Park Street, at Park Street, at SR3. They picked up litter on Adams, Olympic Highway North, K Street, Skate Park, Turner Hill, Wheel Park, SR3 Hill, Evergreen Square, Civic Center, and the parking lots on Second, Third, Fourth, and Seventh Streets, Grove, Wallace, Nealon, Shelton Springs Road, and Johns Park.
Wow. I think I need a nap.
Yeah, I think I do, too. I'm having trouble saying all of this. So, ongoing projects, of course, our litter pickup, cleaning the trails, and cleaning up abandoned camps with Officer Campbell assisting, assuring that camps are clear before they enter. Numbers, 1,500, 1,500 pounds of garbage, six yards of yard waste, and in that was seven needles. 10 people have completed. During June, there were 102 people assigned to community service. That's cumulative. That's not 102 in a month, but that's how many were in the program. It had one based on electronic home monitoring yard work requests. They received one request for yard work that was in the city limits, and they completed that on 6/9. They had five requests for wood, four of which were outside of the city limits, so we can't do that. But one other person whom Jerry is still trying to make contact. So, that was their activities for the month of June.
Wow. It's just amazing.
Yeah, they get a lot done, so.
It looks great.
All right. Anything with the courts other than that?
Not today, I don't have anything. I think I'll have something coming up here pretty soon, but not today, I don't.
All right. Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you, Shelby.
All right, next is Mark Ziegler or his associates. He's here today, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners, for reporting on the Department of Community Development. Functions in the Planning Department of note. The final EIS and comp plan should be completed fairly soon. We've worked through our, the population allocation with Mason County recently. Come to resolution with that, so we're getting back to work. We've got a little bit more work to do on the plan itself because the allocation actually changed from what staff had previously planned on, so.
Would you touch briefly on what you avoided having to pay for?
Yeah. With the change in staff at Mason County, they requested a revisit, I guess, of the allocation, population allocation for the comp plan, the city's comp plan. The potential of changing that allocation significantly, as estimated by our consultant working on the plan, was up to $70,000 in additional costs to the City of Shelton. With that consultant and with some pro bono work by that consultant, as well as Jason Dos and the planning department, we whittled that down to probably, you know, it might be a couple more thousand dollars of work that we didn't anticipate that will be included in this comp plan. But with some hard work from those folks, we've gotten to a point where we can move forward.
So, you avoided the $70,000?
Yeah.
Yay. Very good.
We weren't anticipating because that was a, we were moving forward as such with the, as you remember, the draft environmental impact statement was already presented.
Yeah.
We were moving forward with the final environmental impact statement, and then the population allocation question came into view. So, we're moving forward now.
Good job.
We've received the force practice application for Shelton Hills that has been approved. There are some minor changes that are coming about, and a green permit has been received by the city and subject reviewed now as well. So, staff's looking at that. The Shelton Historic Preservation Board will be recommending an addition of the Log Monument and a band saw of Overlook Park in July, so we'll bring that to the commission at that time. In the Parks and Recreation Department, summer programs started last week with the dismissal of school for the summer. So, our kids love soccer program started with eight participants. Tennis started today with 11 participants, and a volleyball campus started with 25 participants. It started this morning up at Shelton High School campus. We are still working with our seasonal positions in the Parks Department and actually have some openings there. So, we had a recent resignation from the seasonal that was working the weekend shifts. So, some of the things, some of the grass is a little higher, and the weeds are growing a little more than they have been, but the safety issues are being taken care of, and we're trying to fill that position and provide the service that our community deserves on the weekends. We'll also have an opening within the civic center here for event staffing as well. So, we'll be advertising that soon. The Arts Commission released a call for artists last week for new art for the rotating art gallery, which we'll be bringing recommendations to you the first week of August for the next three-month rotation. And we saw Relay for Life the first time at Nealon Park outside of Shelton High School. And from all reports, it went quite well. They're very happy, and they are scheduling again for next year for Nealon Park. So, great event for one of our park facilities as well, and it's nice to have them utilized for community events like this. In our Facilities Department, I know you've seen the completion of the customer service desk upstairs. Happy to report that construction is complete. There's some minor tweaking going on, but as of the end of the day today, all the customer service staff will be located upstairs. Two of the staff members are out there right now. The third will be moved up by the end of the day today, and all customer service staff will be used to be handled up there. I really have to give kudos to Kurt Johnson who managed that project. In something like this, there's lots of changes, I guess. They go back and forth as you're making decisions and finding what's going to work best for not only the customer but the staff. Kurt did a great job, performed a lot of functions himself, again, saving the city some money along the way. So, I'd like to recognize him. In the Building Department, we received 35 permit applications In the Building Department, we received 35 permit applications in the month of June. Two single-family residents just recently. Brings to date 13 single-family residents and duplexes for year 2017. The remainder are alterations, reroofs, mechanical, plumbing, those types of permits, whatnot. Sean Carlstrom started at the beginning of the month of building inspector, so that has certainly increased the turnaround time for our review for permits and look to maybe speed those up even a little more as he gets some of our paperwork and our applications updated. He's been really diving in and working long hours and updating some of the paperwork that hasn't been done since we last had in-house inspector, so it's really great to see a lot of great work being done there.
So, the 13 houses is from January when?
Correct, this year.
And Sean, I'd love to see Sean come down here and we can introduce him to the public. I met him, you introduced him, the other day, but you know, if he was around, I'd like to say hi.
Sean's in the house.
Is he here? Oh, come on up, Sean.
And a high school, Shelton High School graduate.
Why don't you sit at the table for a minute with us, could you? Yeah, we've been looking for a building inspector for a while and we are just very excited that you're part of the group here, you know, and we're really looking forward to, you know, just doing a lot of things in the future here. And so, anyway, you know everybody here, I'm sure, right?
Yeah.
All right, you work for them every day. So, anyway, but I did want to just, you know, make mention of you here. Sometimes when we get a new employee, we kind of introduce them and say, "Hi, how you doing?" and everything, but it sounds like you're doing great and so greatly appreciate you coming on board and helping us build Shelton.
Thank you.
Any questions for us?
I'm happy to be here.
They're treating you okay? They give an office up there today? Were they nice to you? They give you a latte every morning, like?
Donut and?
Every morning.
Right, yeah, absolutely, that's what we want. All right, does that complete your report? Thank you very much for everything you're doing also, Mark. Greatly appreciate it and especially all the hats that you're wearing. We gave you a couple extra, you know, and you're doing a great job. Thank you very much. All right, next is Public Works, Craig Gregory. You can go if you wanted to. It's kind of boring up here, actually, but Craig, you got some stuff for us?
Thanks, Mayor Commissars. We have been working on the water comp plan for a couple of months now. It is on hold at this point. We are awaiting some numbers from Nola and her finance team that, I will let her speak to her difficulties of why she is struggling through these numbers with the change from the old system to Tyler, but it is on hold at this point and we are waiting for those numbers so the consultant can move forward. And we are also still moving forward on the C Street remedial investigation. The contractor should be out on site within the next couple of weeks drilling some test holes, so we should see some activity in and out of the C Street gate. There has already been some work being done up there, some mowing and some clearing of the, just the underlying brush, so they can get that drilling machine in there. So, we should see some more activity up there in the next couple of weeks. Engineering staff and also Public Works Street staff are working on a sidewalk rating program. We do have some funding available that the commission approved from last year, so there is a, some money there to do some sidewalk improvements, but really, we need to figure out where we need to do those improvements and where they're best utilized. And they're trying to come up with a rating system of how bad the sidewalk really is in proximity to high-use areas, whether that be a school, a church, some kind of government building, so that we can best utilize those funds and improve that infrastructure in a proper way, also meeting some of the requirements from WCIA and working with Vicki also on what should be done and where those should be taken care of at. We are also working on a complete street submittal through TIB. That is a great program that we have not utilized in the past and it is an award, it is not a grant. So, basically, you put together a submittal and you can submit every year. Typically, you aren't awarded every year. It's normally every other year unless they're very low submittals. But it's basically a concept of how you go about fixing sidewalks and streets and streetscape within your city. And it needs to be a formal program that you have in place that would be submitted to the commission and for your approval and then submitted to TIB. And those awards range from 500,000 up to 500,000. Cities of our population and size are normally between 125,000 and 250,000, but those awards can be spent on anything when it comes to transportation, sidewalks, streetscape. So, it would be best utilized to couple that with a grant in the future as match money.
So, it's not site-specific then?
It is not. It is citywide. It is basically a check that they write the city that can be used for anything when it comes to transportation or walkability or streetscape.
Great.
So, that'll be.
Do you have an idea what that is, that amount that they award you?
It's somewhere for cities our size between 125,000 and 250,000.
Wow.
Some of the larger cities get the full award of 500,000, but typically, smaller cities can't put enough time and resources into the program to get to that 500,000 level. So, usually, it's somewhere in that 125 to 250,000.
Very good.
So, we are working on that as we speak. The Front Street Pump Station pump motors that we talked about almost a month ago now and, you know, the commission approved the repair of those, we were anticipating those to be around $40,000 each, and we had two of them that were up at the shop that was working on those. We have, after working with Vicki, we figured out that we had an insurance policy on our pumps and it looks like those should get fixed for somewhere around $10,000. That's the deductible that we have for the repair of those pumps.
Wow, that's awesome.
That's nice.
So, it was great and I appreciate Vicki has put a lot of work into this, working with our insurance provider and just getting through this. We're still a little unclear, we're not quite finished up with it yet. It looks like a $10,000 deductible on all four pumps, but they are still up in the air whether it is per pump or the combined four pumps that we've got, possibly a fifth one.
I think the combined four or five pump options, the one that would be the best.
And we have been working to try to get to that point, so we'll see where we get in the next couple of weeks, but we are very close to coming to an agreement on that with the insurance provider. So, that was fantastic news, saving some money there for the sewer department. Almost six months ago, well, a little more than six months ago, we started taking bio solids and I agreed to bring you back the report. And the six-month total of bio solids revenue is just short of $80,000 to this point after the first six months. So, that is great news and Brent is doing a great job down there at the treatment plant processing that and getting that processed with the staff that he has on hand at this point. So, those sewer plant guys are doing a great job. We will be bringing forward in the next month a TIF, the Traffic Impact Fee Annual Update, which we will let you know what the fund looks like and where we have been spending the money. We've just talked about over the last couple of weeks of a couple of different projects that we are going to spend some TIF money on. So, we are going to bring forward not only the report, but most likely an ordinance to change one aspect of that, so we'll be seeing that in the next month or so. The TIB $50,000 grant that we were awarded a few months back, we've started work on all of those locations. We started last week and we will be continuing over the next couple of weeks to complete those. They started work last week on 13th Street and will be moving to Brockdale, Olympic Highway North, and also Railroad out towards between 10th and 12th. So, you should see some of that work and the guys out there also using their new asphalt zipper that they just received a week ago. And if you haven't had a chance to go down and see it yet, you'll have to see it because it is quite a machine and it has already saved them substantial time and money utilizing that for this paving project.
It sounds like fun, the asphalt zipper. I mean, how did you ride this thing?
Can you explain the time savings and the money savings?
It really comes down to where before, we would go out and utilize between four and six crew members to do a cut in the roadway, which was an asphalt saw, and that included traffic control, maybe cutting, shutting, or closing a street. And they would have to cut all four sides of a patch, or if they were doing a cross street, it would be both sides of that, which typically, if you were to cut across a roadway, it would take somewhere between four and six hours. They now, with this machine, can go up with a couple of employees and literally get a cross the street in a matter of about 15 or 20 minutes.
Wow.
And they can not only, it's not only a time savings, but it's also a cost savings because before, all of that asphalt that they cut through, they would have to dig up and haul away and pay to have the asphalt disposed of. Now, it chips it up into small pieces that we can actually reuse it. We've been, we, in the past, we've reused it in alleys. We can also reuse it for subgrade material and also bedding, so we've been using that for years and this will just make it like so much easier for all of the departments. That was a expensive purchase, but a very needed and will be a very used.
The long run, it'll pay for itself.
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
So, Alder Street, moving forward with Alder Street, we have completed survey work on Alder Street for the project between First and Seventh, and we have gotten all of the traffic counts to our traffic engineer, our consultant traffic engineer, and he is looking at the intersection of First and Alder for an intersection improvement down there and what that might look like. Last week, commission approved the Olympic Highway North design. We had a kickoff meeting on Friday of last week and we pitched the idea of this sidewalk project from basically Seventh to C Street. And after discussing that with not only the consultant, Gray and Osborne, but also Steve Porchester, who is on board with our grant processing, we took a look at what that project might look at and Steve's got a very good understanding of the rating system for projects and he actually suggested that it would rate better and we had a very decent chance of being awarded a grant by combining the two together and actually making it a full street, sidewalk, and streetscape the entire length of that.
Wow.
So, not only going with just a sidewalk from Seventh to C Street, but to go with an entire new landscaping plan and repaving of that roadway also.
Very cool.
So, we're pretty excited about that and looking forward to what that might look like in the future with all of that streetscape, new pavement, new sidewalks, new lighting. So, we're pretty excited about that. We will be submitting an application for that entire project in August and award will be given in November, so we're keeping our fingers crossed for that one. And Basin Three has been a tireless project for us so far. The engineering department has spent countless hours revising the old plans to better complete that design and try to save as much money as we possibly can. Before, we would have taken that design and just put it on the street and let the contractor just start on it, and then we would have changed anything in the field that would have been off with that, which every time you do a change order, it is going to be much more expensive than designing it so that the contractor knows exactly what they're going out to do to start with. So, they have spent many hours in revising those and their understanding of the ratepayers and the need to try to get that project completed for the grant money that we have has been so refreshing for me to see that that staff would take that on themselves and try to complete that and get the best product out so that we can try and save the ratepayers some money. So, another cost savings, we are just about complete with the redesign, but we are probably going to wait until around November 1st to go to bid. Usually, the market gets a little better as you get into winter, so we figured instead of going out sometime middle to late summer and maybe not getting a lot of bids on it and not getting the best price, we would wait until some of those summer projects were finished up and completed and get that out to bid sometime in either late fall or early winter to try to get the best price and then move forward with construction starting in the spring.
On Basin Three, I was, one of the classes we were at was with, you know, talking to our lobbyists and our lobbyists would love to be here on the groundbreaking day because they have also helped me and the city through the sewer funding coalition, getting the grant money that's come through. They have been a vital part in helping get that grant money in and they are excited to see a city work as hard for a project as we have done. And so, when you get that date for that, we're going to ask some of our senator and our representatives to come too because they've been fighting for that grant money. That'll be a good day. The lobbyists want to be there too, so make sure, give me a week's notice.
We had already planned on that. We are going to try to start doing that for all of our projects to have a kickoff, not only just to see the final project, but to see what it looked like to start with, so that was.
They are quite impressed, but it took five years. And it's not done, and it's still, and you're doing.
It is not done yet.
And you are doing a great job, right, you are doing a great job.
Thank you.
I think the celebrations are really important to invite the community too as well so that they can see progress and, you know, we can sit here and talk week after week, but it's nice when something finally starts happening.
Yes. And that does complete my report.
I had a question about, going back, sorry, about the complete streets. Are, we're required to adopt an ordinance for that, are we?
That is correct.
Okay, so you'll be bringing that prior to the application?
Yes, it will be a, something that will have to be voted on by you to see that complete package and pass so that we can, before we submit.
Okay, and then will that govern all of our improvements that we make?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
And they really like to see you stick by that.
Yeah.
It's not just you put this together and that's moving forward for the year-to-year because it's not just a single award. It can be awarded every single year. It's not typically done every year, it's typically every other year, but you can be awarded every year if you do stick by the letter of the law that you have put out there that you are going to do. They do not like to see you just throw something out there and then abide by it.
Yeah.
So, it is very important, once you pass that, that you really try to stick to what you said you were going to do.
I've gone to several classes on the Complete Streets program and it's amazing because it does include every aspect of the streets that make it more livable, more walkable, safer, so, yeah, I'm excited about that. Trees, too.
And we do have a guy who helped us get this done. He knows quite a bit about it, so.
Yay.
He has been, he has been outstanding to work with and he has made himself, Steve Porchester has made himself available every time we've needed him, so he has been a fantastic addition to the Public Works of Engineering.
Great. I have something to say. I had someone come up to me the other day and commend the city on the crosswalks, the red crosswalks, and how important doing the side ones, the numbered ones, were. And she said that it, she walks every day in the morning and she said it has saved, before she would start to cross a crosswalk and the car may keep on going, but she said she feels with the red crosswalks that it's, the traffic is more aware of someone coming across the crosswalk. So, she said, "Kudos to the city."
It is good to hear some positive news from that.
And she said she feels almost the side ones, the numbered ones, were more important than the ones down Railroad. She said, "Just because people, you know, it's a different crossing," so she said it was wonderful, it's wonderful.
We commend the crews for getting that done.
Oh, I know.
They did a fantastic job.
Definitely, yeah.
I'll also add that the same in the past two or three weeks here, since it settles in a little bit, you know, that, yeah, I've heard several people say how nice the downtown corridor looks and so, looks like we've settled into something that maybe we got that 51 And so it looks like we've settled into something that maybe we got that 51% of the people behind. Sounds great. All right, are you done?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Nola, it's your, your turn now.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Well, I will start my finance department report with, uh, addressing the issue about the water comp plan. Uh, one of our staff accountants, Bobby Smith, is working on, uh, pulling some data out of our old software. As you know, we transitioned financial software late 2015 and some of the information that Craig needs for the water comp plan goes back before that. So it takes some finesse and some, um, programming magic to get some of the information that we're trying to get to out of that old software, but I've got Bobby working on that. She's also the one that's working with Mason County Garbage on that transition, so she's a pretty busy person right now, but she is working on that and getting that information out of our old software so we can move ahead with the water comp plan. Some other things happening in finance, uh, as far as our financial software, we're targeting an implementation date for Enter Gov for August seventh and eighth, and that's for permitting and building plans. We're also looking at getting a, a module called Insight up and running and that'll help with utility billing and make it more accessible for our utility customers. They can see more complete information on their accounts. Uh, we're also looking at some other related web-based resources for being able to receive online payments, uh, for courts and police and throughout the city. So we're doing that. As far as the solid waste transition to Mason County Garbage, uh, as I mentioned a minute ago, Bobby Smith has been working closely with the Mason County Garbage staff to make this, um, for billing purposes, make this transition as smooth and seamless as possible for our customers. And she has done a really great job of that and everything looks like it's on track and ready to go for a smooth transition, um, for that transition of solid waste services. As far as the gap to cash basis conversion project, that is nearly complete, uh, with over probably seven or eight thousand, I'm not sure exactly, um, adjusting journal entries that I'll be processing through our software. Basically what I'm doing with those journal entries is clearing out, um, accounts receivable accounts and liability accounts in order to make the conversion to a cash basis. 2016 is balanced. I'm very close to having 2017 balanced. Once I know all of it is balanced and we, and I'll run it through a complete test in our testing environment and we'll make sure that it's gonna work correctly, then we'll, then we'll do the go-live conversion. And I'm targeting, um, flipping that switch and actually making the conversion happen by the end of this week. So, yeah, we're, we're gonna do this. That completion of that project is what paves the way for me to be able to wrap up all the bank account reconciliations and from there, then I can start generating finance reports. And I can run them all the way back to the beginning of last year up to current. So we're making progress on that, very happy about that. John Sen was kind enough to come to the meeting with me today. He's hiding back there, but, and he's done a lot of work helping me with that conversion project as well as some other things I'll talk about in a minute. State Auditor's Office is scheduled to come in on the week of July 17th. They'll be here that week, starting the auditing process. And as you know, they're gonna be auditing 2015 and 2016 financials. So I'll be working closely with them as we work our way through that audit. And last but definitely not least, really the big reason I asked John Sen to come today is because he's really spearheaded a, a huge project for us and it has to do with business licenses and BNO tax reporting. Enforcement of timely business tax reporting within the city of Shelton, specifically these two items, annual business license renewals and BNO tax reporting, has, has been pretty lax for a long time. And earlier this year, we initiated some efforts to clean that up. We started working with local business owners to achieve compliance with these tax reporting requirements. And John Sen has really spearheaded that whole project. And, uh, Kim Kellner has helped quite a bit with it as well, but John really has been the driving force to, to make that happen. And he's, he's worked really hard down the extra mile a lot, uh, to help these businesses get compliant. A lot of times, business owners don't always understand how to fill out a BNO tax report because it's, you do it once a year maybe or once a quarter. So he's been really good about helping them so they understand how to do it, when to file it, all that. What this, what this has resulted in is it has produced close to 600 delinquent BNO tax reports being filed with some dating as far back as 2007. It's generated over $28,000 in heretofore unpaid BNO taxes. Of the 342 businesses identified as delinquent in filing BNO tax reports, we have assisted 242 of those businesses to gain compliance. We now have roughly 100 businesses remaining on the non-compliant list. And pursuant to Shelton Municipal Code, we will continue to reach out to those non-compliant businesses to try to help them get into compliance. Ultimately, you know, we would, we would end up having to revoke business licenses for those who just don't respond to us. As far as business license renewals, um, this project has reduced the number of annual business license renewal nonfilers from 117 businesses down to just 42 businesses. It has also generated close to $1,500 in business license fees and over $3,000 in business license renewal late penalties. And those are, if they don't file by March 15th, then there's the $250 late penalty. As with the BNO tax recording, we're basically following the same process, same course with the business license renewals. And we will continue to work with those businesses and reach out to them to try to help them get into compliance. And that, uh, that project has made quite a difference. The system is a lot cleaner now. Businesses are understanding, I think, a lot better now what they need to do to, to keep themselves current. But in case you have any questions on that, I can answer them or I can, John can answer them as well.
Well, I don't have any questions. It sounds like you're doing a great job and, um, I know that you've been, uh, trying to get everything into the new computer system, you know, and, and all that stuff. And it's not always kind of easy, you know, to, to, with computers and software and everything, you know, it's beyond my pay scale. So I wouldn't know how to do it. Any questions?
Thanks for all your hard work. I know that.
Thank you.
It's been a long time needed, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that complete, completes your report there? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, City Manager Ryan Wheaton, did you have anything to add?
I think Vicky can.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, did I skip? Oh, my goodness, I'm sorry. Forgive me for that. I'm just going down here crossing everybody off and there you are. Okay, City Assistant Manager Vicky Look.
I guess that's the good thing about going last is everybody's pretty much talked about all the support services that we provide in, in administration. So, uh, we have been busy helping Darren with, uh, the police department. Those positions are all civil service, so it takes a little extra work to get that done. And, uh, he does have a position that's open, so we're, uh, going to be getting the applications for that and then it has to go through a civil service process before we can, uh, get that person in and get him working down there. Craig also has a position open. It will be, um, advertised this week and, uh, to the middle of, uh, July, I believe. And it is a, an admin assistant that's going to be helping him, uh, with a number of different administrative, uh, functions in the Public Works Department. And, uh, we also then moved the customer service group upstairs. And so we're gonna be really busy cross-training, uh, those ladies so that they can back each other up and get ready for our new city clerk who will be here next week. So we're, uh, pretty excited about that. And there's gonna be a lot of, uh, you know, learning for our new city clerk to come down and work with you, supporting the legislative branch and also being our records officer. And so we're really looking forward to getting her on board. We've been moving, uh, cubicles around and getting everybody settled in. So Kurt's been very busy with the customer service kiosk upstairs and, uh, center and, uh, also getting some cubicles ready for the new staff as, as they come in. So, uh, we've been busy there with, uh, special event permits. You've already noticed how we've had some pretty big events. And of course, we process all through that, uh, through the different departments, Public Works, Parks, Police, all those departments support those events and, and they've turned out really well so far this year. And we have quite a number left to go for the, uh, through the summer and early fall. So I hope they're, they all continue to be as great as they have been so far. We're doing a couple of compensation studies that we are participating in. So that's really good because it helps us figure out where we re-stand with other like entities. And, uh, we're working on one that's total co- cost of compensation, so that'll help us take in a broader look at, at how we're doing compared with, uh, other cities. And so that takes a little time, but it's well worth the effort. And, uh, let's see, what else do we have going on? We're starting in with, uh, our negotiations with our labor unions. And so we should, we have three that we'll be negotiating with this year. And we're also looking at, uh, changing medical plans. We kinda have to do that with three of our groups. And the non-represented, they will know, AWC is our current vendor for medical benefits and they will no longer be offering that. So we're gonna enter into negotiations and that'll be part of it. Tim was going to be down here and talk to you a little bit about our new telephone system that we're looking at. He's been talking to different vendors and preparing an RFP. And, uh, I think by the end of September or so, we're gonna maybe be making a decision on that and we'll get a new telephone system installed.
And the reason you need a new system? How old is the old one?
Ooh, I don't know.
1947 when we put it in.
Can't buy parts.
Maybe thirty years or so.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people knew that.
Of course, uh, a new phone system's gonna give us a lot of other opportunities for improving, uh, communications, so we're looking forward to that.
Gosh, we're becoming so efficient.
Lots of stuff going on.
Twenty-first century.
Soon we'll be seeing the 22nd century, but we'll stay with the 21st. Okay, any other questions for Vicky Look? Seeing, hearing none, okay.
Vicky, do you know the reason why AWC is, will not be handling insurance anymore?
Well, they were considered premium, um, we may go with AWC. They do have other medical plans that they're offering. It's the two that we're on are considered premium plans and they were going to be taxed. Well, we know that we're not entirely sure what will happen with that in the future, but AWC has decided they will no longer offer the two primary plans that we have. So we're looking at other, um, and finance is actually, uh, the, the group that's, uh, the primary on that. So we have a committee and we're looking at what that will be. So you'll be hearing a lot more about that.
All right.
All right, there, City Manager Ryan Wheaton.
Just one thing, Mayor Commissioners. Next week, we're gonna kick off our strategic plan refresh. So we're looking at mission, vision, values and goals. They'll, we're bringing somebody on board that will do individual interviews with you. And they're also gonna meet with our leadership teams, our department directors, and we also have a team of volunteers at staff level. We'll be working on this for a few months. We'll get that information out to our citizen committees as well to get some feedback. And we'll do periodic updates with you along the way after your initial interview so you can make sure that we're on the right track. But we'll start that, uh, next week and then have it wrapped up so that we can make some other plans moving forward.
All right, thank you very much. I think what we'll do is go back to item number E then. I think you replaced.
Yep.
E with F, so now we're returning back to our business agenda section. And so I'll turn this over to, um, it doesn't say who, but I'll turn it over to somebody.
We'll all tackle it a little bit. So we have met since we briefed you for about a month ago, or you three a month ago. We went back and tried to gather as much information to answer the questions that you have. So I'm gonna start with the last page that you have, which is the one that has a couple tables and some charts. We put together comparables for the three cities identified, Aberdeen and Centrale and Port Orchard. And what you see in front of you, you have comparables for planning fees minus the mechanical and plumbing, which were a little bit difficult to get exact comparables to the other three. So we've included the, the main ones, so permit fee and plan review fee. You see those comparisons, not just for where we are now, which is the current, but also for where we were prior to the reductions last year. Then moving right, you'll see an average of those three comparables and then each one broken out. Below that, you see essentially the public works charges, uh, for water, sewer and traffic impacts. You see again what we were before, where we are now, the average and then the three comparables. There are totals for both parts and then that, uh, bold line at the bottom is the total of both. So what we're looking at here is essentially if you came in and got the full service for a new home, you're paying all of these. Moving down, we put together single family home and duplex permits for the city of Shelton for 2016 and the 10 years prior. So you'll see those numbers there. We made requests for the comparables and we have found that some folks have records that are more accessible than others. So to date, we have Port Orchard back. We're waiting for Centrale and Aberdeen, but we expect to get those in the next week or so. So you'll see how we compare to them. Obviously, they've had quite a bit of growth in the last 10 years. Then moving forward, I'm sorry.
Clarification there. The fares are based on $193,000.
Right.
Valuation that was used in the 2016 commission report.
So last year, when Steve brought forward the briefing, we're using the same valuation that he used then. Moving back to the brief, we, the information, the background is same as you had before. We put together four options based on things that we saw last time in the video and also from our conversations with you. So looking at options to move forward or for you to consider, the first one would be to make no changes and simply extend the, the reductions that were made last year. That one's fairly straightforward. And I should point out that if you flip over, you also have a breakdown of what they look like monetarily, again, for that $193, $193,000 valuation. So you have the 2015 and the current fees and charges. Uh, first option would be to maintain the fees where they are now. Second option, we've heard from commission, is potentially raising 20% from the current rate, and that's a 20% overall. So you, you'll see in red what would be changed to give us 20% overall increase. And there, we're looking at plan review, building permit, mechanical, plumbing permit, and then also setting the transportation impact fee back to what it was before, which gets us a 20% overall increase. Option three would be to return everything to where it was before in 2015. That's a fairly straightforward option, everything there changes except for the state surcharge. And option four is something that, uh, the four of us plus Vicky worked on for the last couple of weeks. What we heard coming out of last meeting and some of the previous meetings from last year was that the target really was to go in and look at some, what the state considers to be renewal projects. So these could be bank-owned homes that people are looking to scrape and do a new build, could be commercial or residential properties that might be on an abatement list normally, and coming up with ways that we can address those projects without having to reduce every fee just to get at those. So the option that we've worked on here is identifying a list of renewal lots that, again, we would likely come from bank-owned homes that you would take a look at and then also what would normally go on an abatement list. And should people build on those lots, we would like to zero out their fees and charges so that if they come in and they want to improve one of the lots in town that you have identified as needing some significant work and meets those criteria and would be listed before it moved forward, they would pay nothing. Everybody else would go back to the 2015 level. And then beyond that, we really think it would be important to look at some further financial incentives that could help them make that prod, project more feasible if they were looking at renewal lots.
And that would include commercials also?
Correct. So things that we're looking at there could be that red building next to Domino's, uh, potentially if, uh, a site like Timber Bowl were on that list, you could see some development there. But they would be specifically targeted for that no-fee site. And then, like I said, everything else would go back to normal.
And for our information today, this is the first look we've had of this. And obviously, I wrote my option five right there.
Sure.
Which is, I think, what we should do, you know? And I like to take a little time, just kinda think about things a little. I've got my option five, it can be adjusted or de-adjusted. And I took a little bit out of a couple of these options on what I was thinking about. And I spent about an hour kinda so far thinking about that. So, but I think this is a good place to be transparent, have an open discussion.
Yeah, I don't know that everybody here has heard your idea, if you wanna explain it.
Who's that?
Would you like to share option five?
Oh, I just wrote it down.
We'll share it with her.
Well, here's the deal. Well, here's the deal, I'll tell you, this charge says it all right here, right here. Whether you all understand, I'll point to these two, this graph, and this is Port Orchard graph right here. And this says it all on why we lowered our fees to begin with, is that the least amount of homes that Port Orchard built in the past, basically 10 years, was 18, whereas on our chart over here, for a one, two, three, four, five, five of our years, we had one in two homes being built. So the least that Port Orchard did in one year was 18, but most of those, even their worst years, were in the 40s and 50s. And so, depending on what the Aberdines and Centrale, if we get those back, that, but this is why we did this, and then that little blue tick right there of however many homes that is in 2016 looks like 10. And then so far this year, I think we're up to 13. It's working. What we did is working, but obviously, everybody wants more revenue. And so, when I saw this, I think it would be naive to say that we are totally out of the recession. The other fact that kind of strikes me is the fact that out of our 16-month period or whatever approximate, that the, out of the 19 single-family duplex permits issued, only one builder said it didn't matter to them, but all 18 other permits, the reason they built was because we reduced the fees. So, having said that, I think we need to raise them, but I think we would make a big mistake raising anything to 2015 levels. So, my option says, and this is just, this can be wordsmith or cut apart or whatever, but is that we would increase all the fees basically by 20%, okay? And, and from our current rates. So we go up 20% for this next year. And that, I like the idea of zero fees on charges for damage and vacant houses. And, and this one, I put to qualify that the structure needs, it either needs to be torn down, or they need to put at least 50% money in to bring it up to standards. That it's not just a, a, a house that needs to be painted. I think these are, in our communities, blight. These are situations that are rat-infested houses that need to be torn down, or someone needs to go in and rebuild them, and we need to give as much incentive as we can to do that. And so, it's a place where our youth can gather and take drugs and have parties or whatever. Homeless people can go in there and, who knows, fall into some dangerous stuff. So it's really a blight on our community, and we talked, we've talked about this for years. I really think that the zero permit fees on, on the worst cases, that that is a nice element, and I took that out of option four. So, I would not increase anything back to 2015. According to this chart, or these figures, that even at our current rate, we are still, it looks like 20 or 30% above Aberdeen, even at our reduced fees. If, am I catching that correct? 8,870 something to 5,900?
So there, we're more on the public work side. They're about two and a half times more on the planning fee side, and Craig can speak a little bit to their success.
So, you asked for, sorry, you asked for this. That was one attempt at what I think would probably be a smart move, gradually coming up to an average of what the other surrounding areas would be. So I've completed mine at the moment.
We did reach out to Aberdeen to ask about why their public work side is so low. Do you want to talk a little about what you learned there?
They've had those reduced fees for quite some time, and when I was talking to their utility director, he has been pushing to get those fees raised back up for quite some time with no success, but they have not had a lot of growth down there. So when Mark gets his numbers back, I think we'll see, from what I understand from their utility director, their, their growth may be less than ours. So we'll see what...
They're only building one half of a home a year. That would be hard.
What city is that you're talking about?
Aberdeen.
Aberdeen, okay.
Yeah, they are really struggling there.
Yeah, well, that's, yeah.
We'll see when Mark gets his numbers back, but I'm not sure that the lower public work fees are really going to equate to growth in the Aberdeen area, so.
Right. Great. Any more comments, questions? This is our public discussion here about...
Kathy, did you have?
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay. I had a number of questions, and I don't know if we'll have all the answers to those today, but there were things that I would like to see addressed. And number one, of course, would be how many lots or how many properties would be the goal, and how they would be identified. I think it's pretty clear if they're going to, if they're abated properties or bank-repossessed properties, that's a pretty clear way of telling which ones we're looking at. And then my other question was, how long would this be in effect?
That would be up to you.
Yeah.
That portion, I think that we would want to make it really clear that we would set some metrics for how we report success, and we don't wait a year to do that. This time, we'd want to do it either semi-annually or quarterly, but we would want to make sure that if something's not going right, that, or if it's going really well, we can tell you guys upfront versus waiting until the end this time.
Okay, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable as far as...
I think six months, six months might be, you know, and I don't think we have to give a big notice on when we raise or not. If this city takes off, which we hope it will, and it appears to be, if it starts taking off, we can get our fees right back up to where they need to be, but at the moment, we're on kind of like life support.
I still was asking my questions.
Sure.
Thank you. So, and I think there are some other qualifiers as far as looking at the, the Port Orchard numbers, which is there are a lot more jobs around Port Orchard, and that area is booming. And then with the new Seattle ferries, there are a lot more people moving to that area because it's more affordable than Seattle. So I don't, you know, if we got a lot new industry, I think it wouldn't be unreal for us to expect that many houses per year. As part of this, as I was looking at it, I had the question about if it would be residential only. I like that it's, it's commercial as well, and I'm wondering if something else we could roll into this would be incentives for, to help property owners who need to do some repairs and don't necessarily have the money upfront. I know other cities have begun a revolving loan program, a low-interest loan program. Port, Port Townsend actually has one that's been quite, quite successful, and it's geared mostly for rehabbing the historic buildings or changing historic buildings to a different use, such as maybe adding hotel or apartments up above, things like that. So I'd like to look at that as part of this as well. And I'm assuming since, since this is directed or intended to bring growth into the city, that the, the zero fees would not be extended to the UGA?
Under option four, that's correct.
Okay.
They would not?
Under option four.
Oh, under.
Unless, unless they annexed.
Unless they annexed, yeah. Okay, yeah. And then I, I had some question about the absolute zero fees for everything for, under option four, for the renewal lots. Is, don't we legally have to charge, or we would have to pay the state fee, the building permit? I don't understand. So we would carry the whole?
The $4.50.
Okay, and then inspections, we would just, I mean, we would be subsidizing all the staff time?
Yeah.
Okay.
For those selected lots.
Okay. And did I ask, or maybe you said, that the number of lots and how long it would be in effect would be things that we would talk about and determine?
Before anything would be voted on, we would have a list of those lots, and then we would have to get from you indication on how long you'd want to go before you review.
Okay, and are we going to, and I know this has not been determined, but one thing I was wondering is if it were infill lots as well in undeveloped areas?
Yeah, primarily, that would be the goal.
Okay, so infill abandoned abatement properties?
That's what we've heard. It was a focus last year.
Yeah, infill lots are good. A, a, can I talk now?
Well, I'm almost finished. Yeah. So the other, I, I guess one thing I'm concerned about is by, you know, like, could it be too successful, I guess, is that, as far as could we deplete our general fund by subsidizing all of the building?
I think in theory, that's possible. We wouldn't, like I mentioned before, we wouldn't wait a year to run the numbers. So Mark gives me numbers on applications weekly. He'll swing by and mention where we are with different types of applications. So if something like this were to go into effect, well, if any of these were to go into effect, we would be checking in very regularly, so that if we saw a surge that put us in jeopardy, we would certainly...
And we could, we could advertise very much. I honestly, I like option four. I don't think that our 2015 rates need necessarily go back, I mean, to only 20%, because then if we're subsidizing all the new no-fee permits and we're not collecting the full amount for the other permits, I just am concerned about our general fund and the cost to the city. So I would be in favor of raising the rate somewhat, maybe not back to 2015, but more than 20%.
One thing we can do is we can take a look at a forecast of what, or what options four and five might look like compared to each other. That might, excuse me, that might give some more indication of where you want to go moving forward, if that would help.
Okay, that would.
Yeah, I think that this is, we're having the conversation, and that I, I would love to raise our rates right back to 2015 levels, but if we do it instantaneously, I mean, we just had the, you know, the information given that out of the past, whatever, 19 permits or 18 permits, only one builder said it didn't matter to them, and that I'm kind of thinking it might be, that we're seeing the effects, and it's exciting to see new homes going into our neighborhoods. So I kind of think it's a little bit new to go to 50, to say, big success, and then, you know, just because this chart is kind of bleak, we'd have, if we did that, then we'd have that little bleep, bleep right back down there to one and two. But I actually want, would not, if we did the 20% increase, I don't think, I don't want to give, I'm not as concerned on the infill lots. I, I think the infill lot should have the, the permit fee at, at the 20%, we'll say. I'm open to raise it 20%, but I'm real concerned about vacant, burned-down houses that are unlivable in our community. I mean, to me, that's, that's a main concern, but we're doing this to do what it's doing, and we're in halfway in the, in the stream on this one. So again, we can talk about all the fine, and there's, you know, there's probably a whole bunch of options. We just, I only, in fact, I just got that this, this weekend, so, you know, there's probably all kinds of other hybrids that we can kind of take a look at to come to some sort of conclusion there. I want the builders to keep building, but I also would love to have some of these vacant houses torn down, and giving a zero rate increase or permit fee would, I think, be the extra incentive we need, so.
Well, I would hope so.
Yeah.
Do we have the number of builders? I know there were like 13 houses, and how many separate builders was that?
Over the year, right?
Yeah, over the year that we're looking at.
Over the year, so this was through April of...
Yeah, from April to April.
Not the year-to-date, it was, yeah, 13, it was eight, eight builders.
Eight builders, okay.
Thirty different houses.
Okay.
And was Habitat for Humanity one of them? One or two?
One.
Good to Stashkin. I think this is really the way you get things done, is... Kathy, did you have anything more?
No, not, not at this point.
All right, so any more questions on this issue?
I definitely want to see a comparison of the rate increases so that we can look at covering our costs.
Sure.
And I had another question too. So we would include multifamily in this as well?
I think that that could certainly be an option on the table.
Wow. Okay, great, thanks.
Yeah, we don't have to rush on making this decision, but it's good, good work on the staff on putting those options together, I really appreciate it. So, our next meeting will be July 3rd, oh, it will be canceled, we won't have a July 3rd meeting, but there will be a special commission meeting on Thursday, July 6th, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning for voucher approval, so we will not have a July 3rd meeting, and our next commission meeting will be Monday, July 10th, at 2:00 p.m. in the afternoon. This meeting is adjourned.